2010 Meeting of the Milton School Committee. Please join me in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to go a little bit out of order tonight because we had a very special event just before tonight's school committee meeting. It was a reception honoring our retirees. And tonight, we have five of those retirees here with us. We have Mr. Paula Jamian, we have Deborah Sinrich, I'm sorry, Bev Quinn, Patricia Turner, and Bill Bano. And those that are unable to be with us tonight are Mr. Dan Cooper, Denise Kelly, Barbara Lor, and Dr. Dorey Corshen. So together, collectively, these people represent many, many years of service to the Milton Public Schools. And please join me in showing our support and our thanks to them this evening. Thank you for staying. Anyone want to say anything? Any school committee members want to speak?
No.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you so much, too.
I'd also like to give a very special shout-out to our 16th string quartet who performed this evening. And those four students are Kaylee McNeil, Emily Carpenter, Elizabeth Mann, and Brendan Hayward. Can we give them a big round of applause, please? Do we have anyone here for Citizen Speak? No? Okay. So are there any additions or corrections for tonight's agenda? Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I don't know if it matters, but the Wellness Committee, it's supposed to be April 30th minutes, not February 26th.
Okay. And I would just like to add in a chairman's report.
Sorry, Karen.
Okay, yes, the updated.
You got me, and I didn't get that on mine. Sorry. Thank you.
And I would like to add in a chairman's report. Are there any other additions and corrections? Okay, so we'll accept this as written now. And at this time, I would entertain a motion to approve the school choice minutes of the school committee meeting on May 18th, 2010.
Some of them.
It was an open forum. A second?
Second.
No?
I'll second them.
Kristen already did. Any further discussion, Mr. Hubien? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, it's unanimous. Okay. And Ms. Gormly, may we have your superintendent's report, please?
Thank you, Chairman Sheridan. To begin my report, I'd like to ask Dr. Karen Spalding to join us at the table. Dr. Spalding? How are you this evening?
Good.
Busy time of year?
Yes.
Thank you for joining us, Dr. Karen Spalding. It is my personal and professional privilege to introduce to the school committee and to the public the new principal of Cunningham Elementary School. And we had, again, for those of you who might be viewing for the first time tonight, we have a process that we create a screening committee. The Milton educators send forth names of teachers who want to serve in the screening committee. The PTO sends forth, puts forth, names of parents. We survey our administrators, and we have a representative school committee member on the committee. The screening committee meets, and very distinctive to this district, the members of the committee are given every paper application. Every application we receive, there's no prior screening. The group brainstorms what they're looking for in the new administrative position, in this case, the new Cunningham principal. The group then spends a tremendous amount of time, and they brainstorm questions that they want to ask. They're very thoughtful in their analysis, they go over all of the questions as a group, and they decide who they want to interview. And my remarks to this group are always, the process is confidential, but I always tell them the process works. And the most talented, capable, gifted candidate always comes forward. And in this case, we had two very talented finalists. We always say to send forth two or three candidates that could be, take the position tomorrow. And we then set, create a group of administrators. Every administrator from Central and the remaining principals, and we have a session. We check references. If the process determines that we have to do a site visit, we do a site visit. And I have to tell you that I say to my peers that when we make outstanding appointments at Central Office, of principals, of administrators, or teachers, it really improves the education for children, for students in the Milton Public Schools, but it really empowers our job. And I have to say that I'm very pleased with the appointments this administration has made, but I reflected today, and I said, maybe it's because you're going to be the principal of Cunningham. And I had that position once, and was very, very happy. And I hope that you find it as rewarding and enriching experience as I did, but I couldn't be happier or prouder to appoint you as the principal of the Cunningham School. I haven't been this professionally proud of an appointment, and again, I think it's because you're going to be the principal of Cunningham School. I gave it a lot of thought today. Besides you being an outstanding candidate, and Milton, I've shared with the school committee and the public, are very fortunate that you joined the Milton Public Schools and that you chose to further your career here, because I do not have a doubt that you could be a principal and higher-level administrator anywhere in the state of Massachusetts. So we are very, very fortunate to have you. For the public, I'd like to just take a moment. Dr. Spalding attended Leslie College and earned her bachelor's in middle-school math science education. She then went on to Simmons for a master's of science in middle-school science education, earning her doctorate in, from the University of Boston. And her dissertation, and it's very interesting, the type of professional you are. Often, no one asks what individuals have written their dissertation on, or they don't share the topic of their research. And I've been in your company in several different situations where you have shared your research on, to stay alive, the efficacy development of urban first-year teachers and its link to their persistence and their success. So again, I know that you have shared your research at the Pierce, and we can see it working, and your support of teachers joining our profession. For the last two years, Dr. Spalding has been the assistant principal, the K-8 Math and Science Coordinator at the Pierce School. We feel that we know her so well, but for the viewing parents and the public, Dr. Spalding was also an acting principal in a K-8 in Cambridge for one year. Dr. Spalding had a very, very successful career, and I know that from speaking to your superintendent in the Cambridge Public Schools, at the Asa Morris Elementary School, and at the Cambridge Middle School?
Across the district, supporting middle-school teachers.
Absolutely. Dr. Spalding has extensive publishing. We'll put her resume on the web and awards to her credit. I'll tell you that if you go on the web tonight to the DESE, what used to be known as the Department of Education site, you should see some of our teachers and administrators when they recognize Dr. Spalding's picture in the corner on the Department of Education website. She has done work for the Department of Education, she leads professional development across the state, and has provided unbelievable opportunities for, I could stay here all night, for Pierce Middle School students and teachers to be recognized across the state. And I would take one personal note to thank you. This year, one of my personal goals, putting out to administrators, was to take these opportunities for our students and our teachers to be nominated for programs across the state, awards. And the mere fact that they were going to be nominated would be a professional reward, and for a student and their family recognition of their efforts. Dr. Spalding took that idea, and I think for the last three weekends, she's been at MIT, at Tufts, with 12, 20 students being recognized in the area of science and math. And she was responsible for a science teacher winning a $5,000 Amgen Science Teacher Award for, really, a national award, and the school was also given $5,000. And again, that teacher, Ms. Gilbert, was, again, competed with science teachers, K-12 from across the state, but you initiated those kind of professional opportunities to recognize our teachers and our students, and I want to really thank you for that. I will tell you that the parents are excited, the teachers are thrilled, the response is phenomenal, and I believe that the school committee and the town of Milton are going to be very, very pleased and proud to have you as the Cunningham principal. And perhaps I'd like to present you to the committee if they have any questions or you have any remarks.
Just pick microphone.
I just wanted to thank everyone who was involved in the resume screening and interview process. I know that's a very important job, and thoroughly appreciate your time, and I am absolutely honored, and I choose that word completely intentionally, to be appointed the principal of the Cunningham School. As word has gotten out to my friends and family, the question that they pose back to me frequently is, why Milton? Why Milton? Not because they have any ill feelings of Milton, but just want to know, why Milton? And so as I sort of piece together my response in my head, I think, well, I could tell them about the students, and I could tell them about how, when I ask them, "How are you doing today?", they not only say, "Fine," but they turn around and say, "Well, how are you doing, Dr. Spalding?" And when I ask them, "How was their weekend?", they say, "Fine," and they turn around and say, "And what did you do this weekend, Dr. Spalding?" Or I could tell them that it's because of the parents, and the many parents that come out for many events and support in a range of ways. And that would be the Pierce parents and the Cunningham parents who have already contacted me and asked me what I need and what will help me transition. Or I could tell them about the teachers, the amazing work they do, the amazing time that they devote. If you saw the number, and I know many of you were there, the number of teachers who turn out to support their colleagues, like Mr. D. at the play on Thursday night and Friday night. Or I could tell them about the administration and the leadership, and the amazing superintendent and assistant superintendent, and commitment to children. And then I think about sitting at the talent show not too long ago, and I did perform once. And really, the best answer to why Milton was that feeling I got when I sat there and said, "I am a part of something great. I am a part of something amazing." And it's that same feeling that I get when I walk into the Cunningham School. And I want to publicly thank Chris Gerber, who has been amazing in helping me learn and transition, and the teachers and the families, and other staff over at the Cunningham who have been wonderful. And I know I have been a part of something great and will be a part of something great at the Cunningham. And I'm extremely excited and honored and humble to be a part of that. Thank you.
Thank you. I think Mary Gormly's said, not said it all. Mr. Hubien?
No, actually, both of them have said it all. I was looking at your resume and your dissertation, and I was going to ask you a question. Being so close to Boston, you know, we are a suburban school, but some would say that it's very close to being in Ermin. And you just explained perfectly the differences between being in Boston and being in Milton. And we're so glad to have you, and good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I did already say this to you, Dr. Spalding, but I do think Pierce's loss is Cunningham's gain. I think Pierce is going to miss you tremendously, but I think Cunningham is just so grateful. They're going to have a great time with you. So, sorry to see you go from Pierce, but...
I am going to miss Pierce greatly as well, but have already tried to figure out ways to continue those relationships, formally and informally.
Great. And we're so glad you're staying in Milton. Thank you.
If I might, to finish Dr. Spalding's resume, you will complete out a phenomenal leadership team, and you've been part of our extended leadership team, but to have you as a principal in the workings day-to-day, again, will improve the education of all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to share, and I'll be brief. I put in my email blast, but I really think that this merits, and the public responds to just a quick update on the finish of our athletic program. So prepared by our athletic director, Steve Traster, if you would indulge me. In baseball, Coach Ted Curley's team qualified for the state tournament and finished second in the Hurgett Division with a regular season record of 13 wins and seven losses. The team was led on the hill by junior Willie Archibald, who you can find some nights in the band, working, playing in the band, and other nights hitting the baseball bat, and seniors Mike Bonalotti and Matt O'Neal, and the hitting of Mike Muse. After beating Stoughton in the opening round of the state tournament, the Wildcats lost to the second seed, Duxbury, yesterday in a 4-3 loss. A valiant effort. A lot of enthusiasm built around that game yesterday and during the last two weeks in Milton High School. Softball. Softball finished the regular season with a record of 14 wins and eight losses. They qualified for the state tournament and lost a tough opening game, which John and I tended to rival Brantree 7-6. Coach RJ Matoro's squad was led by senior leadoff hitter Morgan Sumner and junior pitcher Brenna Callahan, who threw her first career no-hitter a few weeks ago against Needham. Very exciting. Boys lacrosse. Under former Milton High School standout Kevin Lynch, the team has made steady improvement over the course of the season and finished this season by defeating Dedham. Through their record, though their record is not great, Coach Lynch's team has been in almost every game and has played with enthusiasm. The team was led this year by senior Justin Stancato. Girls lacrosse. Coach Barbara Wright's girls lacrosse team finished the season strong, beating Dedham on senior day. Though they did not qualify for the tournament, the team played inspired all year. The team was dealt with a lot of injuries this year. However, with a lot of freshmen and sophomores seeing playing time, the future looks bright. Seniors Claire Lucniskis, Katie Higgins, and Jillian Ridden were the leaders for the Wildcats. Boys track. Coach Chuck Jamian's team finished with a team record of 3 and 4. Many individual performers did very well in the state meets and completed today in the Bay State Conference Meet, competed today in the Bay State Conference Meet. The team was led by seniors Steve Manning and Colin Cockro. Sophomore sprinter Matt Lazzana also had an outstanding spring. Girls track. Although Coach Dale Schneider's track team did not finish a great team record at 3 and 4, but many individuals had stellar seasons. The season was led by seniors Olivia Boulier, Cheryl Tron, Kate Madigan, and Emily Hughes. Boys tennis. Coach Paula Jamian's team fought hard all year but came up short in their quest for a state tournament qualification bid. The team was led by senior Sam Shepard and junior Steve Stafford. Girls tennis. Veteran coach Liz Mercer's team qualified for the state tournament and finished with a record of 11 and 7. They lost in the first round of the state tournament at Hopkinton last Saturday. Junior Ariana Launey had an excellent season at number singles, finishing undefeated. And senior valedictorian Ally Houlihan had a terrific year at second singles. That was submitted by Coach Traster. We want to recognize all those individuals and those teams. For the public, our kindergarten letters, assigning students with completed packets have gone out assigning schools. This year, I want all parents to know, and will put out in the email blast, that all teacher assignments will be mailed to parents in mid-August. Again, all report cards will go out at the elementary level, but all teacher assignments for kindergarten through grade five will be made in mid-August. We have completed the first-grade French immersion and English assignments. Will be during Finance Subcommittee, referring to the kindergarten aid issue that several school committee members have been contacted regarding. A note that the last day of school is Monday, June 21st, but for half-day kindergarteners, the last day will be that prior Friday. And on that last day, we always get lots of calls, no lunch will be served on Monday, June 21st. If you go to the web and you have any issues concerning any of our summer school programs, the information is on our website, or you can call the superintendent's office. Also on the website will be all of the summer reading requirements, and in my newsletter, I'll be detailing at each level the expectations around summer reading. A special, as Ms. Sheridan says, shout-out for, this Friday from 6:30 to 8:30 in the Milton, in the Pierce Middle School Library, a grand finale, an art show from our ACE program, again, this Thursday at Pierce, from 6:30 to 8:30, the art finale. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
Ms. Gormly, do you want to do Chris now?
Yes. Now I'd like to call to the table Chris Masalski. And for the public to know, the Milton Foundation discussed for years hiring a grant writer. And school committee member Lynda Lee Sheridan serves on the Milton Foundation and did a tremendous amount of research, working with school committee member Kristen Bagley-Jones's husband, Don Jones, really moved with the foundation to hire Chris as the part-time grant writer. The public often asks if this is a funded position through the Milton Public Schools. Chris works half-time for the Milton Public Schools. Gives us, you give us full-time, don't you?
I try my best.
And so Chris, again, is, puts out articles in my email blast, he reports to the foundation. Tomorrow night, he'll be reporting out to the PTO presidents. He comes, he has attended several of our PTO presidents' meetings. And what I, the message I want to give to the public, Chris is going to give us a summary of his work, but we are open to ideas from the public, from where individuals are employed, any leads that parents or citizens have. Chris will follow down those leads. Last year, Kristen Bagley-Jones provided Chris with a lead that resulted in the appointment of a adjustment counselor for the Milton Public Schools. So on your own, you've done a tremendous amount of research, worked with the staff so that your grants are in line with our needs, and we have developed an excellent partnership. I think you'll, the public and the school committee will be very pleased with this update from Chris tonight. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Well, thank you very much. And I also wanted to thank Superintendent Gormly for noting that several of the Milton teams finished their season strong because they decided to play Dedham at the end of the season, my hometown. So I noticed that Mr. Gillis isn't laughing at that, he lives there as well. That being the case, thank you very much for a wonderful introduction. It's been an exciting time working here the last year and a half, and we've gotten to a place that's very exciting. It's going to come up over the next six to eight months as to the grants that we're applying for, and the plans that we have to continue to develop a very rich grant program to enrich the programs of the Milton Public Schools. The first thing that we have that's up on the screen right now is an overall summary of grant activity over the past year and a half.
About 200 percent.
And it lists the current pending grants, and upcoming deadlines, and funding that we've had year-to-date. Pending right, and what you can see is there's a rich diversity of grants that we've applied for. We've, we get a little larger there. We're going to a lot of private sources. We're looking at the Target Foundation, Walmart offers grants through their local stores, as well as through their National Foundation, Bank of America, Citizens Bank. The Citizens Bank Foundation is an interesting ask that's in conjunction and in partnership with Travel Soccer in Milton, and also with Parks and Recreation in Milton. And that is one of, a theme that we're going to be looking at tonight is collaboration, which is going to be a pathway toward us being much more successful in driving the grants program forward. Actually, if we can go ahead and skip down to the chart, that's a little bit farther down in the document. I'm going to be trying to be a little bit brief as well. I think it was mentioned earlier, there might be a ballgame on tonight or something like that. But in my house, it's glee. The ballgame doesn't start until glee is done, so...
Mr. Hubien?
Before you continue, the grant update that I got is different from the one that's up there. It shows SCRV Emergency Response Grant of $43,000, which is not on that chart.
I apologize, that's an older document that's up there from that list. But I'll certainly explain that grant, and Superintendent Gormly mentioned that Mrs. Bagley-Jones, Mrs. Bagley-Jones had gotten us a lead last year to, that resulted in the hiring of a school adjustment counselor. And that's the School Emergency Response to Violence Grant, SERV, that's going through the federal government, Federal Department of Education. It was directly related to the revelist family tragedy. And what that enabled us to do was to establish a position of an additional adjustment counselor in order to restore the school back to its previous state, so that the learning environment was as welcoming and as safe as it had been prior to the incident. It helped to reorient the revelist child into the framework of the school, and also helped many of the students and many of the teachers through professional development as well over the past year. So that is a grant that's on there. There's probably a couple of other smaller grants that are on there as well, that, including some school field trip grants. There's also one small grant from Bank of America that's on that list that is representative of a parent who has given of her time on different school committees and projects. And it's a volunteer grant that Bank of America offers to its employees, that if they work a certain number of volunteer hours at a nonprofit organization or school, that they will make a donation on their behalf. And that was the first sort of toe into the water of those types of grants. And it was successful, and small at $250, but that's one of the things that we'll talk about when we talk about the parents and constituents getting involved in the grant process, that we'd like to expand that program. And that was our first attempt at something like that, so, absolutely. I apologize for the difference between the documents. This piece should be the same, the chart that's up on the screen right now. I'm sorry, I'm having, it's going back and forth between in and out here, so hopefully everyone can hear me.
Either that, or I'm just going to have the other one.
Okay. Okay, all right, much better. Okay, so this chart, what this represents is our current grant writing projects. One of these grants is going out the door, they, actually, the code, as you look up there, the black box with a white check mark represents a due date of a given project. The other, the other piece of information that you can, I don't know that I'm going to know what to do with this, but I'll do my best I can here. Let's, not exactly sure how to, there we go. Thank you very much for exiting out that for me. The other piece of information that you can see, the yellow spots with the red targets, those are when we should know the status of the grant, we should receive an award announcement at that point. And the red and the green are simply for, those are representative of grants that require a lot of planning and a lot of writing time. So the red zones would be when we would be looking to plan and collaborate with different members of the community. Right now, as of yesterday...
Chris, we're going to put this all on the web, but would you, for the viewing public and for the school committee, briefly just identify the request, the amount of money, and a brief description, very briefly, of all of them, just for the viewing public?
Sure, absolutely. The first one that's up there is the Nellie May Foundation, and we requested $250,000 over a three-year period. This is to establish a chapter of a step-up-to-excellence mentoring program. Another lead that Mrs. Bagley-Jones had brought to our attention, a program for sophomores, juniors, and seniors in high school who show potential, but also may have some ch... juniors, and seniors in high school who show potential but also may have some challenges in their lives, whether they come from families who live in low-income situations, or whether they're children of immigrant families, or families that don't speak English as a first language that can require extra help. This is a program that can help them to drive toward college and future success. We applied for that under the Nellie May Foundation's Opportunity Fund. That just went in yesterday, and we received confirmation of receipt of that. So, we're very excited about the possibilities there. It's our second time putting a grant before the Nellie May Foundation. We got good feedback last time about our proposal, and we are excited about the possibilities, particularly since this is a three-year grant, which would help us toward both establishing the program and providing enough funding for some sustainability while also catalyzing other fundraising around this particular program. The next one is- I'm sorry, go ahead.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question about that? So, for all of these, it would be informative for me to understand, is- would the dollars be going towards additional personnel or materials and supplies, professional development, with the concern from my perspective being that any grant money that we bring in hopefully is self-sustaining, i.e., if we are bringing personnel on with that, that health insurance, et cetera, would be covered as part of that? I don't think that we've had a broad discussion on those kinds of details, but perhaps it's something we should consider at the Finance Subcommittee, just so that we understand what the commitment is with regard to these applications.
Sure, absolutely. And in this case, the funding would actually be routed to the nonprofit that we're partnering with that provides the programming for Step Up to Excellence, called Piecework Partners, and they work in four schools. So, it would be a value-added service that would come into the school. It wouldn't result in that type of an arrangement.
Great.
The next grant that's up there may result in some position adds or some stipending. We're still working out the details at say, at the Carol White Pep Grant. This is a very large funding opportunity and also a very good one for us. We're an excellent match for this. It's up to $1 million over a three-year period to basically overhaul physical education program. Maybe overhaul's a strong term for it, but really to enhance it and to bring new ideas and new programming. Things like the program that has been piloted at several of the elementary schools, utilizing parent volunteers in recess time to increase the amount of physical activity that is being engaged in by students in the Milton Public Schools, bringing that and formalizing that and creating a system through which that can become part of the curriculum for many years to come. And also, that grant would have the possibility of purchasing equipment that the entire administration strategically determines is required to bring the physical education program to the next level in terms of conforming with the Massachusetts requirements for physical education and student learning in that area. So, we're looking to- we're right now, we're working with a couple of groups of private providers, and also, we're collaborating with school districts that have already received these funds. The Arlington Public Schools have provided us with a copy of their grant and a copy of their budgets, and we're talking with them about what was effective, what worked for their narrative, and what is working right now within their program, so we're not entirely reinventing the wheel. And those grants right now, they normally are out by this time. We're awaiting an announcement of the RFP from the federal government. One of the things that's happened is a lot of these funds have sort of been backed up as the Obama administration reorganizes a lot of different funded programs under the Department of Education, and this is one of them that's been rolled into a larger unit of the federal government. We expect for that RFP to happen any day, and we expect a submission date either in August or September. With knowing about that sometime, probably eight to 12 weeks, we'll receive an award letter for that, so.
Can I just say, which grant was that for?
Oh, that's the Carol White Pep Grant.
So, it's already been turned in?
I'm sorry?
It's already been turned, submitted?
Oh, no, we're waiting for the RFP announcement to come out, so.
Oh, I thought you were saying you were going to here now, that's why I was confused.
Oh, the- the award, the- it would be submitted in August or September, and we would know in November or December.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood you.
That's okay.
Thank you.
The next one is another grant that is sort of pending a group decision as to whether we want to go to approach this group for these funds. It's a Massachusetts grant, the Park Grant. It's a Parks and Recreation Fund Grant to- that allows you to rehabilitate fields and parks. This would be to rehabilitate the field at the Pierce Middle School, to make it into a usable athletic field space, and also to integrate outdoor classroom space in the form of a ringed walking path and walking trail, along with stations for education and learning. There are, as with all state money, there are several caveats that go along with this, and we would need- we need to work directly with Parks and Recreation and any other groups that are going to be involved to determine whether the covenants we would need to enter into. For example, the state would require certain levels of access for the general public, not just people that live in the town, that if they rehabilitate the park, that people can access the park and the fields at those times. So, we have to weigh the benefits against the costs of that particular program. But that is coming up, there's a- the due date for that is July 15th, so it's a- it's a pretty quick timeline and turnaround for that. The REMS Grant is an Emergency Management Strategies Grant from the federal government, and that will be a follow-up. That will come out in January or February of next year. That will help us to do emergency preparedness and professional development for staff and purchase of materials for the schools to be able to handle emergency situations in a more comprehensive strategic manner. That would be a follow-up to the grant that's coming due within the next couple of weeks, the SOS Grant, the Secure Our Schools Grant, which is through the Office of Justice. And it will be a joint application of the Milton Public Schools and the Milton Police Department, working with Officer Charlie Paris at the Police Department. They've applied for this grant several years running and have not received it. We're hoping to turn a difficult situation into an advantage with the recent incidents that have happened and also the fact that we have matching funds already lined up for this particular grant. It requires one-to-one match to be able to purchase things. This would be able to defer the- defray the cost of the security cameras for the high school. We could receive as much as half of the funds for that as long as we have a match and we do have those lined up, and that's a particular advantage for this grant.
Well, Mr. Huban, Mr. Huban had asked about this particular, whether Chris was following up on this grant. I'd like to give the school committee and the public an update. We have three bids out that- to put cameras in and outside of Milton High School, remembering that these were valued, engineered out when the school was built. Many parents and citizens have asked us about cameras after the incidents we had over the last few months. The Milton Police believe that there should be cameras at Milton High School, and most importantly, your high school principal has been talking to me about cameras for the last two years. And so, we had the proposals in before the- we experienced the incidents at Milton High School with the ammunition. They are- the cost is at approximately $175,000. We- Chris wrote an excellent proposal, and the school building committee funded $50,000. The Copeland Family Foundation funded $50,000 only if we raise the balance of the money, which is quite often a funding source will say, we'll give you the money if you fund the balance of it outside of the school budget. We have gone to two other sources, and we were not successful. And we recognize that these are difficult times. We appreciate those groups listening to our grant proposal. We have individuals who are out there looking for other funding sources. This is a very valuable source, this school committee meeting. If any citizens or parents have any ideas that they want to brainstorm with the administration, we're open to any and all ideas. So, we're really looking for $75,000 in funding that will complete that project. So, we'll have $50,000 from the school building project, $50,000 from the Copeland Family Foundation. And so, to Mr. Huban, when I communicated with the school committee, Mr. Huban immediately asked if we were looking for grants. I didn't want to interrupt your question, Mr. Huban, but I also want to just add that Mr. Huban calling, Kristen Bagley Jones giving us ideas, I put out in my email blast if there were any parents or guardians who were in the work of writing grants, and I got a phenomenal response. Seven individuals have volunteered to meet with Chris and me and Kristen Bagley Jones's husband, Don Jones, who this is his profession, and we're going to plan to meet four or five times a year. And again, just like Chris is doing now and you're reacting to his presentation, sit down with these people who this is their work. Are we going in the right direction? Are we maximizing Chris's talents and giving us suggestions from people who are in the field? So, I thought that that would really expand, I think exponently, all of the opportunities that are out there for Milton. I'm sorry, Mr. Huban, I think I interrupted you.
Very well said. Chris, you had mentioned that the decision isn't due till January, but on your chart it says the decision's in August.
For which grant are you referring to?
The SOS.
All right, the REMS Grant, the RFP will come out in January. For the SOS Grant, we'll hear about that within six to eight weeks. That grant is due on, I want to say, the- there are two deadlines for it. One is June 15th is the priority deadline for that. You can also submit on July 2nd, but law enforcement organizations that submit for the priority deadline will receive priority consideration for that.
Have we submitted at this point?
We are- Charlie and I are going to be working on this grant tomorrow. The Milton Police Department has to submit the grant. It has to come directly from a law enforcement agency, and so, we're putting the narrative together for that and looking to submit within the week.
And we'll hear in August on this?
We should. It's a very quick turnaround time on these grants. They are looking to identify organizations that have matching funds in hand, that they can get these funds out to and make- this isn't necessarily part of the stimulus bill, but the idea is to get these funds and put them to work as quickly as humanly possible. And as quickly as a federal agency can do it, they will put- they will turn this around. They've done that within a six to eight-week timeline on all previous RFPs for the Secure Our Schools program.
So, if we hear in August and October, November, we can have the cameras in place if that- if we are awarded money?
I think that would be- we would hope that that would be the case. Sometimes encumbering federal funds can involve a little bit of a- of a time struggle, whereas it- it's going through the police departments, so the- there's going to be a bit of a push and pull as to getting those funds in, matching them with the funds that we have that are being raised for the school department, and then making sure that all blends correctly from an accounting and finance point of view. So, there may be a bit of a delay there, but at the same time, there shouldn't be any reason that late fall, we should be able to engage a contractor in this work.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And I wanted to mention that one of the exciting things, and Superintendent Gormly brought up, the group of parents who are volunteering to work on grants. One of the exciting things about that is that for a lot of the private grants that we have applied for over the last 18 months, it's been a struggle mainly because we don't have any personal connections to those particular places. And what this will allow us to do is to have folks come forth that are going to be able to reach into their personal and professional networks. And we have a series of projects right now. We have about seven different areas of priority projects that we've identified that are on this sheet that are, you know, we did an awful lot of touch-and-go over the last 18 months to fi- figure out what do both the schools and the staff and the students need, and what is out there and what is available. We didn't want to just chase funds for the sake of chasing funds, but we also came to the realization that just because the schools need it and want it doesn't necessarily mean there's going to be funds there. We've got a group of projects right now that we've really honed our focus on these, and we think that they're great opportunities both from enhancement of the school's perspective and from an availability of funding perspective. And for a group of parents and constituents to take those projects and put them out there to a larger and broader audience is really going to enhance our funding capability. One example of those projects is the next on the list, it's abbreviated NEWFS, and that stands for the New England Wildflower Society. And that is now a strategic partnership that we are working together with them to build up a case for funding for the outdoor classrooms program. And there's an awful lot of funding possibilities for that that are mentioned at the bottom of the chart. We're working together. They have a great deal of expertise in both obtaining funding for nature education projects and also providing professional assistance for environmental education projects. They did a four-year teacher and residency program in the Framingham Public Schools to engage students in environmental education in outdoor classrooms. We're hoping to replicate what they've done there. They had been awarded a grant from the Howard Hughes Foundation. That program no longer exists, but we're looking to utilize their expertise in funding for the environment to be able to cross over between our ability to get funding for education and work together to benefit both organizations, as they're very excited about working with us and working with students and working with Milton Outdoor Classrooms. We're also looking at the issue of athletics and activities and developing funding cases around- around that issue and to develop some interest in, you know, we've looked at a certain- we've looked at other districts that have been successful in starting to raise private funding. Obviously, the Boston Public Schools put something together with the Red and Blue Foundation, where they put in $1 million into the schools for athletic purposes. We believe that we can be successful here as well. We've got an outstanding funding case. We have several ideas for how to accomplish that. We've also got instrumental music lessons in Saturday School as being two other areas that we're looking at that we can enhance instruction. The instrumental music program has been the- we've been providing subsidized, either low-cost or free lessons for instrumental music for children in the elementary schools. We're looking for folks that are looking to- it's a really small program, $6,000 to $10,000. We're looking for folks to pick up the baton on that and support that in the schools. We've got three different family foundations that during last year said, we're having a very difficult year because of the economy. We'd love for you to come back to us. It's now time to come back to them. So, we're going to be looking at them and also other organizations. We've gotten two noes from the Ernie Bach Music Drivers Foundation, but we got to the final round last time, so we're hoping the third time is a charm. And then also the Saturday School Program, looking to different foundations. Bank of America and Walmart are two of the areas we're going to right now. They have interest in after-school and extended learning time at instruction, and so, we're looking to those organizations to potentially provide some additional funding for that. I know we're very successful in raising funds around Saturday School at the Last Celebration for Education. We're trying to build on that, demonstrating that we have community support for the program, that it's important for the students in this school, particularly lower-income students to be able to have a subsidy so that they can participate in this very important program. So, those are the areas in which we're applying to. We've got a very, very busy next six to eight months in terms of grants, and we're looking to add to this plate and looking to mobilize people in ways that we haven't in the past, particularly through this parent volunteer group.
Because I just want to say, as you know, this was my drive report. I just, I really felt that this was a way that the Milton Public Schools could get some well-needed funding was by having a grant writer. And I think that people, maybe even six months or eight months in, were saying, well, what have you gotten for grants and how much money have you gotten, but have you received so far? I think that this really shows people that you have to build a grant process, and it's not something that happens overnight. It takes time. It takes that collaboration that you talked about, and that's key. It's so exciting to see that you're building collaboration with the Parks and Recs, with the Milton Police Department. I think this is really, really exciting, and the fact that you can lift up the continuous support that the town of Milton, the townsfolk of the town of Milton, provide to these schools and to the town as a whole as partners in these grants is really exciting, and I'm just, I'm thrilled for this presentation. And also, I think that your expertise is going to energize all those parents that have stepped up to come and help, and it's- we're creating a think tank. I think this is all exciting, and I just want to thank you for the good work you're doing.
Thank you very much for those- that's very kind of you to say, and I do wish that I could have sat here tonight and said, we've raised X million dollars for Milton Public Schools so far. It has, as you- as you mentioned, it's been an evolutionary process and- It has, as you mentioned, it's been an evolutionary process, and we're at the point now where we are prepared to get that level of funding and be successful with those types of projects. So I hope that we just continue to evolve, and I think we're going to be very successful over the next six to eight months.
I'm sure you will be. Mary Kelly first, I think I saw, sorry?
So I would echo Chairman Sheridan's comments about all the work and all the collaboration that she's doing. I truly appreciate the chart. I think I must be a visual learner. It really looks terrific. I guess my question to you is, if you do receive the funds, what's the symbol that goes up there? And is that something that we can update sort of continuously, sort of have a?
He set his own evaluation line in six to seven months.
Wow.
I think perhaps the monopoly guy holding a bag.
There you go.
Or a smiley face.
Or a dollar sign.
Absolutely.
That sounds great. Thank you. So that's a good point, to update, you know, how can we keep this updated on our website? Is that something you can, as this information changes, could you possibly go in and keep that updated for us?
Absolutely, and we can also put out continuous updates through Superintendent Gormly's email blast as well.
That's a great idea. You could get your own link off the website and update, and again, areas of interest and companies that you're looking for liaisons with.
And I think that would be a great way that if we're able to use the web as a way for the parents who are involved in the committee to be able to communicate with other people in their networks, to be able to show them, "Hey, come to this website and you can see what we're talking about." That's just another tool that they'll have in their bag as well.
Ms. Bagley-Jones?
I want to echo what you both said and also add to it. I mean, how long did it take the MFE? We want to really thank and acknowledge the Milton Foundation for Education for sponsoring this position, but how many years was it in discussion before? I mean, it must have gone on for a number of years. So it's a very lengthy process to even get you here.
Yeah, at least three years or longer.
I was going to say, five to 10. Yeah. It had been talked about for a long time, and then it finally happened. And it's the same process with the grants. I'm interested in what your rate, you don't have to tell me the rating, but the Nellie May Grant, you got a certain rating out of a certain amount of points, right? And they gave you feedback on what they liked and didn't like. So now you have that for this grant, the next application, and so that will make that application even better because, so people just need to understand, you apply once, you take their suggestions, you apply again, and you have a better chance of getting the grant. But it doesn't happen like that. It's a lot of work. And the only reason I had the ideas to give you is that I'm often grant-funded myself, and grant money comes and goes. But the larger the collaboration is, like the Carol White is a huge collaborative grant, and I don't know, I don't think we have collaboration with our Charms in terms of applying for grants, but for example, that's a huge grant. The Readiness Emergency Grant is a huge grant. Places I've worked at got both of those grants because they had large groups that pooled resources and applied, and that, I don't know if that's something we can think about, but for really big grants, the bigger the collaboration that, the better off we're going to be at getting a shot at them. So I don't know how to do that. And then the other thing was, the parents, like you have a couple on here for Lowe's and Walmart, Bank of America, and if there are parents who actually work there and they could tell you that, we'll have a much better chance of getting somebody to look at our grants if there's a Milton parent or resident who is connected to those.
Absolutely, and to work backwards on that. For the Bank of America grants that we're looking to submit, we have two parents that work there who have committed to say that when you submit, we'll put in a letter of support and also follow up with our supervisors and trying to get them to pay attention to it. And also, in terms of the collaboration for the Carol White Grant, absolutely agree with you. I think it's, we've got, we've got some decent potential collaborators that are out there, and we also, we just received the grant, the mini-grant from the Milton Hospital in order to establish really what is the first building block of what we hope to be the health and wellness education piece of that Carol White Grant. We really hope to bring them in as well to the process and make them an active collaborator. And then I think it's as simple as reaching out to several of the national groups that have expertise in working with groups that have gotten Carol White Grants, bring them in. Put aside a certain amount of funds for them to be able to consult on the projects to make sure that it's going to meet our national goals and put all that together. I'm sorry?
I have a name for you.
I would love to hear it, so fantastic. Absolutely agree with you.
Great work, though.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Well, thank you so much, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you very much.
I'll move into the chairman's report at this time. We have just completed a very busy week, graduation week at Milton High School. And just a week ago, we had the awards night. There was a boosters night in the field house where hundreds of families came together, of freshmen's through seniors, students came and celebrated the successes of all of the students. It was the prom and the graduation. And I just want to send out a huge thanks to Dr. Drotter, Alan Cron, Yolanda Beach, and all of the parent volunteers who made the all-night party a success to keep our students safe. And it was a wonderful week of celebrations for our students. And in that same vein, I'd like to send a special shout-out to our school committee reps, Charlie Rose Marin, who's a senior who has graduated, Ben McCarthy, who is a senior who has graduated, and is John Savino, is he a senior as well?
No.
I didn't think so. Okay, so we'll hopefully have John back with us again next year. But special thanks to those two students who attend many of our school committee meetings and give us their great input.
You mean our new alumni?
They're our new alumni, that's right. That's great. I also want to talk with school committee members for a minute about our next meetings. We need to start thinking about our summer meetings, and I would propose we try to do one meeting in July and one meeting in August. And I'll ask Bev tomorrow to send around an availability questionnaire, if you could just fill out when you will be available to meet during the summer hours. We had a wonderful reception tonight for the retirees, and next week we will have, not publicized, but a very special event that's going to be held at Cunningham and Colicott Cafeteria for all of our volunteers in the Milton Public Schools. When we started to put the list together, the names and groups were running off the paper. It was really an impressive collaboration of people that worked together to make our school system such a success as it is. So that's something, if you're a volunteer and you received an invitation, we hope you will be able to join us. And then the next school committee meeting, which again, won't be televised, but it's our retreat, and that will be on two weeks from tonight, on the 24th. And I'd like to just pull people for a start time on that. I'd rather start earlier than later. If anyone's, if you could let me know after the meeting of the earliest time, I mean, maybe we could start at 6:00 and do a dinner working meeting, so if people could let me know about that.
7:00 AM?
No. So a nighttime meeting, probably 6:00 or 6:30 at your earliest availability.
If I might just add, I knew Ms. Sheridan was going to address Senior Week, and I want to add my congratulations to the high school staff and to thank the school committee for showing up at all of the events. We had one school committee member whose child was a, whose son was a member of that graduating class. Congratulations to Ms. Kelly and her family. And we also have an assistant superintendent, whose son was part of that graduating class, to the Phelan family, to the Kelly family. And I have to tell you, on behalf of the administration, we rest easy when that week is over and with all of those events, that everyone is safe. And to the families, to the students, they enjoyed the week and got through it safely. I would like to recognize tonight that on awards night, over $100,000 in scholarship and awards were given to Milton High School seniors. And so many individuals have come forward and said that it's such a poignant night that in the memory of individuals and many civic organizations do their fundraising to give the money back directly to Milton High School students. So again, every student is asked to recognize the funding source, but I don't think that we could ever, ever imagine, Ms. Kelly brought it up, and we're going to reflect on how we can actually get those stories out and who were these people 86 years ago who left the funding in their name that $1,000 could be given to a girl and boy from the graduating class of Milton High School forever going forward for all sorts of, you know, characteristics of civil, civic involvement or academics. And it was a very, very moving night. So again, our retirees spoke tonight that they feel that they have worked and given and lived in the schools in a community that supports education. I call Milton, Milton is it schools? The schools are Milton. And I think that night really demonstrated the support of this community in our young people and in the future of Milton High School seniors. So as their superintendent, every year, Dr. Drotter and I switch off. I was very proud of his presentation, his speech, and what was the theme? To be stubborn and to stay, to stay, I always want to think what the speeches were about and remember them, and he did an outstanding job, as did all of our students. And so I want to wish our seniors well in the next chapter of their lives, and my message to them was, "We are their family, and we're here as they go on in their careers if they ever need anything," so.
I just think that with the heat in that field house, I was happy that he stayed vertical instead of horizontal.
I had the same thought myself. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Sheridan.
It was a great week. Mrs. Kelly?
I just wanted to add, you know, going through the entire senior week and having everyone be safe, I'd like to thank Ms. Bagley-Jones and her committee and the administration for really trying to focus parents and students on, you know, really safe behavior because it's so important, and I look forward to how that whole communication evolves in the future.
Okay, well, that's a nice segue into Health and Wellness Safety Subcommittee Report. Ms. Bagley-Jones, please.
It was interesting, thank you, Ms. Kelly, for that comment, but it was interesting, one of the communications we got from Dr. Knight was when he talked about the school administration being willing to listen and to not just listen, but to actually actively engage and be involved in this issue that many school districts shy away from it. So I really think the credit goes to the administrative team and Dr. Drotter and John and Mary for being so open to letting us talk about this thing, teen substance abuse. And I really want to thank the committee members, Mary Gormly, John Phelan, Dr. Drotter, Margaret Gibbons, Steve Traister, Dan Cooper, who was then replaced at the end by Rich Garino, Barbara Polansky, Jackie Morgan, and then from the community, we had Jason Buford from Milton Hospital, am I saying his last name right? Okay. And Vicky McCarthy, the town youth liaison, and Tard Ducham, who is a parent but also from the CATS program, and Cheryl McDermott, who is also a parent. They really worked very hard this year and focused a lot on teen substance abuse. We also talked about the incidence of the threat assessments and bullying, and we'd like to keep working on those issues as a committee. We are looking for another parent on the committee, right, Ms. Gormly? Preferably a middle school parent, not, we'd take any parent, but a middle school parent, we really don't have any representation from the middle school. We've got elementary, we've got high school. If you look at the committee members who are parents as well, we sort of have that, those pieces covered. And if everybody could look at that video that we have the luxury of having a connection to, 15 Minutes to Save a Teen's Life from Dr. Knight at the Children's Hospital, I've heard really good feedback about it. And then my last comment, this will be my really brief report, is that June 12th, everybody's going to come out to support the Milton Hospital's walk, because we're already receiving some money from that walk in a grant. So if nobody comes out to walk, we won't receive that money from the grant. So I'm going to be there, and I hope to see everybody else.
I'll be there.
You'll be there. And how could we not, with Jason on our committee, not show up for his walk? So we will be there. And we will be meeting in the fall on Friday, so if there is a parent out there who would like to be a member, we usually meet at noon on Fridays because we get salads from Jackie at lunchtime. Just email me or email Ms. Gormly or myself, and we'll talk to you. And that's it. And you're supposed to have minutes in your packet, but I don't think they're there. I got them late to Bev.
I think we got them at the last.
No, 4:30. Oh, you did get them?
Yes.
Oh, good. So we're up to date on our minutes. And that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly?
What time would the walk be?
And where is it? I was going to ask the same question.
Details, details, Ms. Gormly? I just know I have to show up somewhere.
We have Mr. Phelan going on the site as we speak. You came up with the date.
Saturday, June 12th.
We're going to give all the facts before the end of this presentation.
Great. So you're making me think of another date that we didn't remember to mention early, Ms. Gormly, is the garden tour this Friday and Saturday to benefit the outdoor classrooms at Piers. So I know that that, there are those boards around town if you want specifics, or I know that it's also on the website, but I know the garden tour is this Friday and Saturday.
And I might add, this is really how one person can make a difference. Ms. Neville, who was the director of the Milton Ot Museum, that was housed at the Cunningham School, came forward over a year ago and said, "I'm going to plan a tour of Milton gardens, and all of the funds are going to go for landscaping at the Piers School." So she really has been the driving force, and that, the tickets are available in our office. The information is on the web. It's all Friday and Saturday, I believe. Do you go by caravan or trolley? I'm not exactly sure.
Drive your own.
It's very interesting.
Go to Cunningham Hall, I think.
Cunningham Hall.
They give you the map of it.
And they won't tell you what, whose gardens, anybody at this table, is your garden on the tour? The gentleman at the end, is your gardens on the tour? Your gardens on the tour?
They should be, with Lisa.
Mr., oh, Mr. Cohane, is your garden on the tour? Are you old? So 10 to 12 gardens in Milton, but it's a surprise. And so again, for all the individuals who are going to contribute to that, thank you.
I think that there are different homes on Friday and different homes on Saturday as well.
Oh, I thought you saw all 13.
No, I think it's two sets. I thought it would be a good girls' night out, but I've, girls' day out, but I've actually had husbands that said they wanted to come too, so. Everyone's welcome. Okay, Mr. Phelan, did you get the specifics of that yet?
It's on the way.
To be determined, okay. We will update you as soon as it's hot off the press. Could we hear now from Mr. Huben and the Policy Subcommittee, please?
Absolutely. Second reading on two policies. The first is a brand-new policy, the anti-bullying policy. And I'd like to give accolades to Assistant Principal Alan Cron at the high school and his group that has been working diligently on this long before the incidents that happened in South Hadley, Mass. They were well ahead of the curve. This is something that Milton prides itself on, and they really took the bull by the horns and came forward with a very strong policy. Kristen Bagley-Jones is on that committee as well. We waited this long to implement it because we were waiting for the Senate and the House to pass a bullying policy or, excuse me, a law, and we had to make very little changes to what they had already done. So again, kudos to that whole committee. Alan made a presentation to us at our last meeting, and we are here to ratify this policy so they can go into the student handbooks for the fall. So the first policy, I would ask that the chairman ask for a motion to approve in its second reading, the anti-bullying policy.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Mrs. Kelly?
Just as a matter of process, this goes by legal counsel and?
It has, yes. Yep.
And I would like to just echo the thanks to Alan Cron and the committee because this is an amazing document, and honestly, I've already been getting emails from other school communities asking about it. So word is out.
If I can just add one more thing that I forgot. Most committees, excuse me, most communities within Massachusetts do not have to implement this until October of this year. So as the chairman just noted, a lot of communities are looking to us to say, "What have you done?" And they're, this committee has done a great work, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
The second is a revision to our policy, ACG, Grievance School Committee Policy. Basically, through certain things that happened over the course of the last couple of years, we realized that this policy was not compliant with current regulations as we needed to put a complaint officer or designate a complaint officer, and that's basically the only change to this policy. And that complaint officer. And that complaint officer is or will be the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Administration or another administrator designated by the superintendent. But for our purposes, it would be the Assistant Superintendent for Personnel and Administration. That's basically the only change to this policy. So I would ask the chairman for a motion to approve this change.
Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor? It's unanimous.
That's my report.
I actually would like to make a request of the Policy Subcommittee to look into the possibility of developing some kind of a policy around high school graduation and exchange students. We now have a very active rotary that is bringing students here almost on an annual basis, at least one. And I think that we need to explore the possibilities of that going forward. So Mr. Huban, if you wouldn't mind, I can talk with you further about that. Share some emails I've been getting, but I'd, I'd be happy to see this discussed further at a school committee meeting.
Ms. Chairman, with the consensus of the committee, we will take it under advisement and get back to you before the start of school next year.
That would be great. And I did speak with Ms. Gormly before, just to.
If I might add?
Yes.
I've also asked Mr. Huban if you'd ask your committee, with all of these new websites being developed in the town, we wanted to come up with a policy. Who's going to provide the information? What information's going to be provided? What's the vehicle so that the schools communicate and are transparent, but do that work effectively? So Maura Downs, our communication specialist, had asked if she did some research, could she work with Mr. Huban and his committee and come up with a policy?
If it's okay with the chairman, that will also be done prior to the start of school next year.
That'll be wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move. Mrs. Kelly?
Just, I'd like to recommend that perhaps we contact MAS C and advise them of the, the adoption of our anti-bullying policy. And just send it to them sort of as a courtesy matter and just say, "This is where we're at with this," and perhaps they can use it for other schools or consulting.
So would you do that, Mr. Huban?
Yes, it will be done.
And is that posted on our website as well? The bullying policy?
Once adopted, it should be, yes. And since it has been, hopefully this week.
Thank you. Okay. Mrs. Kelly, a Finance Committee update, please.
We have been working on the full-day kindergarten budget and funding issues. Just to give a little history on the full-day kindergarten program, as part of our commitment before we implemented it, three, three years ago, two years ago? We committed to the town that we would basically create this additional programming, which is a tremendous benefit for our children, but we would do it without impacting the town's finances. And so we have made great efforts to look at all of the funding necessary to create this program and to offset, using fees and the grants that we receive, half of the program cost. This is an evolving process because we believe that there are costs associated with having the additional full-day kindergarten program, like additional buses, like additional administration necessary to collect fees, et cetera, that are part of creating this great program. And so we've been reviewing it continuously throughout this process to do our best to do that. To my, to my knowledge anyways, we haven't totally accomplished that from the perspective of offsetting some of those additional costs as part of those programs, but that's our goal. That's where we want to get to. And so that has been part of the process that we've been using in reviewing how we're looking at next year and next year's allocation of resources. And, and what we have come up with is that we believe for next year, we should be able to increase the, the aides. But we do have some questions out there as to how much we can. And I guess I'd like to ask the administration to, to fill in some of the details in terms of timing, in terms of when we know exactly what monies we'll have, because the, the grant from the state has been questionable as to whether we were going to get what we had previously thought we were going to get. And so there's a whole, there's, there's a few issues out there, but I believe the Finance Subcommittee feels comfortable that we will be able to increase what we had thought would be a total halftime cut of full day, of the kindergarten aides. But at this point, we're not sure what the end target will be. So if I could ask the administration to fill in some details.
Thank you, Ms. Kelly. First, I want to recognize the Finance Subcommittee and all the school committee members who come. And the way that Ms. Kelly just explained us working to really take this half-day, this full-day kindergarten grant and be completely transparent with the budget to work to perfect it is the climate of every one of the meetings. And on behalf of the three of us in the Milton Public Schools, working with the school committee, that's the tone that every one of the meetings take. Working to make our, to maximize every dollar, to be accountable for every dollar, and to be completely transparent with the public. Parents have communicated with the school committee and me. And I would tell you one story that we did a learning walk every month we go through as a leadership team. Every classroom's in each school, and then we debrief as a leadership team. And I would tell you, after we went in a kindergarten, Dr. Droder said to me, "Ms. Gormly, I think you might want to rethink those full-day aides in those kindergartens." And again, it speaks to Milton parents. They understood that we had to make a cut of twenty-four positions, that then the warrant committee funded seven teachers. We still are eliminating seventeen positions next year, actual individuals who are currently working in the Milton Public Schools positions. Additional cuts in professional development and savings in electricity. So the Finance Subcommittee, again, working with the administration, we heard and worked with, the Finance Subcommittee sent me back to work with the individuals who understand the kindergarten teachers, the elementary principals. And there was a desire, at a minimum, to increase the aides to a point six, to have the aides there during the English Language Arts and the math periods and lunch and recess. And then working with the Finance Subcommittee, we heard our goal was to increase, if we possibly can, the aides to point seven, a point eight. We're having a Finance Subcommittee meeting Thursday night. The principals are preparing a more detailed picture for us of the timing of the kindergarten day and what that will mean. Hand-in-hand with that, Ada Rose Marin, who has been our really consultant on getting our full-day kindergarten going, is in communication daily with the work going on at the state. And she said, "I thought tonight I would have the word on what the funding's going to be." For the last two weeks, Ada Rose Marin has been networking with individuals in the community because there was the fear that the grant was going to be reduced. So for the public and the kindergarten parents, I'll put this out in my email blast, we weren't just waiting to hear from parents. Until we know what that full-day kindergarten grant is, we really can't make any increases or decreases. Indications are that the grant is going to be level-funded. That would be really good news for the Milton Public Schools. Matt Gillis has been educating me on level funding could actually mean even a little more funding because we added a class. So Ada Rose Marin has indicated to me that tomorrow, we'll know what the funding is. Hopefully by Thursday night, analyzing our budget and working towards Ms. Kelly's description of having the full-day kindergarten program, the additional half-day at no cost to the taxpayer. We hope by, at Thursday night's meeting, to make a recommendation and then communicate to every kindergarten parent, obviously to the school committee first with a vote from the Finance Subcommittee and then to all the kindergarten parents.
Good. Mr. Huban, sorry.
Going to the question about no cost to the taxpayer, at what point does a point six or a point seven or a point eight become a full-time employee thus being allowed to opt into the town's health insurance and those types of things?
A half-time employee is eligible for insurance from the town.
Okay.
Good question. Mr. Gillis, correct?
Yeah, as long, as long as it's twenty hours a week.
Okay.
But halftime aide, usually if you take the six-point-five hours, they fall a little short. But they're all full-time this year. I'm not sure if the town had cut any of those positions since we hadn't given any list out yet.
And to Mr. Huban's point, I believe the root of him asking originally was that when we expanded the full-day kindergarten program, it's the only program that the Milton Public School budget actually assumes the insurance costs for the increased number of employees. We don't do that for any other grant, for any other program, but we do for the full-day kindergarten. We do for another, for the.
Title one, I think.
For the title one.
Right.
So that's my update. I'll communicate after Thursday night and we'll hope to bring closure to this issue.
Mrs. Kelly, anything else?
The one of the, well, one other thing among others, I'm sure, is we're coming to the end of the year, so we're interested in, in looking at what the forecast is in terms of finances. Every indication that we're going to end the year well, meaning we don't have, have any outstanding bills that we don't know about, that are issues, but we'll be able to report out more definitively on exactly how we end up at a future meeting.
And we plan on Wednesday, at Thursday night, making a complete report and having the agreement with the Finance Subcommittee, how to close out the end of the year. And to Mr. Gillis and Mr. Phelan and the Business Department, we get, and to our sped director, Mr. Rubin, almost hourly updates on the closeout. And before we leave, well, you might want to put it in new business, Mr. Phelan has the closure to the hospital run.
Oh. Do you want to tell us now?
Sure. It's right up at the hospital parking lot at 199 High On Ave. There'll be a walk and there'll also be other activities for students and children. And there is a fee to engage in the walk, that's a donation, but children will be able to walk and take part for free.
And what time?
Ten a.m.
Ten a.m.
And what's the fee? Do you know what the fee is?
I think it's twelve dollars. That's what I remember hearing.
Okay. Great. And that's Sunday, the twelfth?
Saturday.
Saturday, the twelfth?
Saturday, the twelfth.
Do the high school students get community service if they do it?
They do. It's been in every morning's newsletter about the walk.
It's a healthy community service.
That's right.
Anything else, Mrs. Kelly?
That's it.
Great. Want to remind school committee members to sign the warrant. I don't think it made it up here tonight, so we have to make sure we sign that before we leave. Is there any old business? Next meeting agenda items? That will be our retreat as well.
Do we have a proposed sort of format for, are we going to use last year's format in terms of?
We're open to anything. I mean, what we did last year was reviewed our goals and set new goals. We had talked about maybe having someone come in and speak to us about the new open meeting law, the slight changes in that. Dennis just went to the new Charting the Course presentation, two-day presentation. He's officially the most knowledgeable person in school committee policy and procedures. And so we might use some information that he's obtained at his meeting. And anything else that people want to?
Just one of the things that I had hoped that we would try and do is sync up with the administration in terms of their goals and our goals so that, you, you, obviously there may be some separate one, but there should be some major alignment in terms of what the focus would be for next year.
I think that's absolutely the direction we've been moving, so thank you. And just also an FYI for school committee members that we need to start thinking about our evaluation for Ms. Gormly again. So we'll be doing, undertaking that this summer. And no, no other further business? I would entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session for the purpose of contract negotiations, not to return to public session, but adjourn from the executive session. This will be done by a roll call vote.
So moved.
Second. I always forget them. Mrs. Kelly?
Yes.
Ms. Bagley Jones? Me, yes. Mr. Pavlicek?
Yes.
Mr. Cohane?
Yes.
Mr. Huban? Thank you, Cable. And go Celtics. Have a nice summer. That's right.
No, hold on. Oh, yeah, you can turn it on. Leave yours on. Yeah, just for another.